Five, and this is a city commission meeting. Could we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Smith is absent. Clu, present.
Here.
Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Robish?
Present. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move on to the agenda approval. You have the agenda in front of you. I don't have any other additions unless someone else does.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Clu. Aye. Frank?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. The city commission adjourns to convene as the board of adjustments for the following public hearing. Three point one, consider variance request filed by Joe and Debbie Snyder, four sixty-two Custer Avenue Northeast to subdivide a three point nine one acre lot into two equal lots. We have the applicants in the audience tonight, but we'll turn this over to Mr. Cranston to start us out.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see on the board, I have it up here. Let me zoom in a little bit here. This parcel is directly north of about, I don't know, maybe a quarter mile max from Dakota Energy to the east, and Dakota Energy is directly south on Highway fourteen. The applicant is requesting to do, this is an R O., large lot residential area, and minimum size is typically five acres. They're just asking to subdivide it into two lots. This lot was nonconforming to begin with. It was only three point nine one acres, and so they're asking to just subdivide the lot because they want to put another residence on the north lot. And the planning, both planning commission and the, for the city and the joint planning commission recommended approval.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Is this septic or city sewer, or what do they explain?
No, it would require a septic, I believe. So they'll have to have the drain feed and do the per test and all of those things.
Any comments at all?
No, there were no opposition comments at all received.
And this is already noncompliant, and there are other lots in that adjoining area that are noncompliant as well. So is it, is that, I mean, is that kind of understood in this area?
Right, and the, for example, this is in our joint jurisdiction area, and so the county commissioners are aware. There is language in the joint jurisdiction that requires the lot to be a minimum of two acres because of that per test requirement and the sanitary issues, and so, but the county looked at it and they were fine with it, so there was no issues that came up at the planning committee. Thank you.
Mr. Clu, you have anything?
Nothing at all.
Joe, Deb, you guys have anything you want to add to it? Okay. Roll call, vote.
Clu. Aye. Frank?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Thank you. The board of adjustment adjourns to reconvene as the city commission. Move on to public forum. Public forum is limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. If you have something, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for public forum tonight? I think we have a couple, so come on up.
Jim Schmidt, I live at four fifty-five Jersey, and what I'm here about is the gun range. The gun range has been, it's extremely loud, and if you go to Sixth and, in Jersey, and listen to the big guns, ask yourself, could you live there? Honestly, it's terrible. Look at the pictures, and you'll see how close those houses are to the gun range. When they designed it, they got past the public process and went directly to, what do they call it, the grandfather clause or whatever? And, no, that basically, we had no voice. People across the water there, some of them have like hunting things out there and stuff like that, they were notified. I only live two blocks. My name was not on the list. Nobody notified me, you know?
For the record, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, basically, that was one of the things. But the thing is, I represent all those people that signed that are not happy with that. The old range, the reason we tolerated it was it was set back a hundred yards or so to the north. It was surrounded all the way around with a bank and surrounded by trees. It absorbed all that sound. What happened? They moved it all the way up to the city property line or the edge of the city, put it there, and we thought, okay, they're probably going to put up some kind of a protection or something between us and it. A chain link fence and a tin roof is not right. It doesn't work. It echoes, it comes off the plains, it's awful. Kids run into houses when they hear the firing, babies cry, pets are traumatized, windows rattle, and I myself am a Vietnam vet, and my blood pressure and my blood sugar go up because of it. I don't do well with the sounds of war, especially when they have those semi-automatics going. Can you imagine? On a Sunday afternoon, I had an episode.
Yeah. Let me interrupt you just a little bit. Remember, I said at the beginning, we had three minutes, and we do need to keep that in compliance, okay? So you have a few minutes, a few seconds left, so.
Okay.
Like they'd say on News Nation now, thirty seconds left. Go ahead.
Okay. Basically, we're not trying to close the thing. We even have some ideas and stuff like that, but we really need to be heard. We need to get together and really discuss this thing.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Hader, come on up just before that. I just, you've been here before, so try not to repeat, 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 but I got you.
I don't think I'll take the full three.
Okay. Thank you.
It is weird being on the side of the table. You know, thank you all for your service, and thank you all for the opportunity to talk tonight. I live at, my name is Kerwin Hader. I live at six thirty-seven Lawn Ridge Avenue Northeast. So I'm roughly about three-fourths a block or so from the shooting range. Moved there in two thousand and two. I knew the shooting range was there, you know, my wife and I and my family did, and, you know, there's noise. I mean, we could hear it in our place when the bigger guns came out, started shooting, but, you know, as Jim talked about, there was a lot of trees, there was burms that was farther away, too, because, you know, that road had to be moved when they put in the new shooting range, and they did move it about a hundred yards closer. But I think taking out all the trees and the berm really has affected the noise there. Now, it's really loud, and the usage is way up right now. I don't know if it'll continue that way, but certainly you might hear it a couple times a week before. Now it's every day, several hours a day, so it's being used a lot. I'm not a sound engineer, so I don't know what all absorbs the sound, but it would certainly seem if they would go on the back of the shelters that they have there, put some type of wall there, sound absorbing wall, that would probably help to focus the sound ahead. Certainly a berm there like they had on the old one would help, also a high berm, or along the interstates, when you go through Sioux Falls, and you see the walls that are up there that, you know, help reduce the noise on the other side of the wall. Something like those would work. Not being a sound engineer, I'm not going to say which one is better, how you would do that. And I think when I read what the joint planning group looked at before, there is talking there about the noise, doing things to reduce the noise. Really, there isn't anything now. There's no berm, it's just coming straight back, you know, all they have is the chain like fence there, and it's much closer than it used to be. So I think something needs to be done there to improve that. We did go talk to the county, they kind of referred us to the city, so please don't send us back to the county. And that's all I have. Are there any questions that I could answer?
Anyone else in public forum? Mr. Cranston, you were, I cut you out, sorry.
Yes, I would just like to offer a little bit of a rebuttal. The people from the Isaac Walton did not circumvent the process. They went through a variance hearing, in fact, and all of the homes by South Dakota state law were required to notify in writing people when a variance is going, could possibly affect them, within a hundred and fifty feet excluding roads and alleys. That's the way the state law is written, and that's what we complied with. So for Mr. Schmidt to say that we did something different there, I don't believe I'd agree with that.
Okay.
Is there a possibility to have a rebut to the rebut? It'd be really short. I'm just going to go to the.
Very short. You've got thirty seconds.
Joint planning commissioner meeting when they had it, and these are the things that we heard, and that's why you didn't see people complaining about it at the time. They said the changes will safely divide the east to west sides of the range with a berm that will protect the users and make the range safer. Further, the addition of berms should help deflect noise from the range so that noise will be less of a nuisance to the neighbors. As noted in the application, adding a cover of the shooting line should help control noise while the same time protecting shooters and the shooting tables and benches from the weather. As the planner, I do not believe the changes will lead to direct increase in the number of shooters who use the range. Two things I would, you know, the number of shooters is way up, and the things we talk here about noise just aren't accurate. So reading that, I would agree with the two. Beforehand, I wouldn't have had the argument, but seeing how it actually has been done, that's where the argument comes in now, and the concern about noise. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Imagine, buddy.
No, I think we've had enough time already. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, it's, everybody said their piece, and everybody knows it's out there.
We're going to be getting together, right?
That's, um, this is a joint jurisdiction thing, so, you know, it's, we have no jurisdiction, we don't have self-jurisdiction on this, so.
Mr. Mayor, we're fortunate enough to have our attorney here in person tonight. Would it be okay, could we ask again, public forum, we're not required to respond, but informationally, could we just get some clarification on the city's role in this process?
Sure, if he would like.
Well, I think, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Aaron Shively, I'm your city attorney. Mr. Cranston, I think summarized pretty well what the legal requirements under South Dakota law are for a variance process. I would want to, I think, take a look at what the information was presented here tonight before I can kind of go into any further details, but, you know, certainly, you know, anytime you have property owners that have effects on another property owner, most oftentimes that's considered a civil matter between those parties. It's not to say that the city and the county might not, you know, have a look and conclude that there is something that they could do, but oftentimes, these things are handled as a civil matter between the parties.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I'm wondering if you've had any conversations with the Isaac Walton and with that group?
No, no, I have not.
I tried, but they didn't get back with me.
But I would sure be willing to, or if the joint planning commission wanted to hear us, I would certainly be willing to talk with them.
Okay.
And I'm sure Jim will.
Thank you for bringing that forward tonight, you guys. Thank you. Anyone else in public forum would like to speak?
I have something, imagine that.
Really?
First thing, the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day is Wednesday, October twenty-second, from nine until two, and on behalf of the Solid Waste Department, I want to thank all of our departments for helping with that. It takes a big crew to make this run safely and effectively, and every one of our departments are helping out, so thanks to that, to those departments for that. A reminder, this is for Huron City residents only, and you must bring a valid ID. If you have questions, you can call Solid Waste at six zero five three five three eight five four two, and there is a listing of acceptable and non-acceptable things that can be brought up, and I suggest you check that out, and remember that all of your different chemicals cannot be mixed into one container. Aerosol cans should be boxed together. The maximum container size is five gallons, and a limit of fifteen gallons or a hundred and twenty-five pounds of waste per vehicle. That's it.
Okay.
This is personal, not commercial.
Exactly. It is no business or commercial waste.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Frank.
Chief's on his way up.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Derek Layer, Police Chief of the City of Huron, just want to make everybody aware that on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from ten o'clock in the morning till two o'clock in the afternoon, the Huron Police Department will be participating in the DEA's National Prescription Drug Takeback. We've been participating in this, I believe, since two thousand and eleven or twelve, can't really remember for sure. Purpose of this program is to take any unwanted old or expired medications that people want to turn in. The location at the police department here is inside of our east entrance, right outside of our dispatch window. It's a big green metal box, you can't miss it. Again, that's October twenty-fifth from ten to two. Through this program, over the sixteen years of its existence, the DEA has been able to take back nineteen point eight million pounds of unwanted prescription medications. On average, we get anywhere from a hundred to two hundred pounds sometimes, so it's a very good program for the city of Huron. And also a reminder, if you're unable to make that timeframe on Saturday, that that box is available to Huron residents at any time. It's inside the east entrance. We're open twenty-four seven, so anytime you have medications you'd like to drop off, please do so. One other thing I'd just like to remind everybody is just make sure there are certain items that cannot be in there. Those items consist of like syringes, sharps, and any illicit drugs. We will take liquid medications, as long as they're in the original package and they're very tightly, it makes a mess if we put anything in there and it's not, so. Again, if you have any questions, feel free to contact the police department, six oh five three five three eight five five zero. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in public, for public forum? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Matters appearing on the consent agenda are expected to be non-controversial and will be acted upon by the commission at one time without discussion unless a member of the commission requests an opportunity to address any given item. Items removed from the consent agenda will be discussed at the beginning of the formal items. Our consent agenda tonight consists of six point one minutes of October sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, six point two fuel quotes for city departments, and six point three payment of the bills.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Clu. Aye. Frank?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Moving on to bid quote items, seven point one, consider the request to rebid propane fuel supply for the two thousand and twenty-five. We have with us tonight, Megan Agleson, is that yours?
Yes, that bid wasn't posted properly, and we only got one bid for it, so we'll be sending that back out to get rebid.
Okay, thank you.
Move to rebid.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Roll call, vote, please.
Clu. Aye. Frank?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Seven point two, consider pay request number twelve for bid number two thousand and twenty-four dash oh eight, is the sewer main lining to HK Solutions Group in the amount of sixty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Ms. Agleson, would you like to?
This is a progress payment for the sewer main lining project, and it includes point repairs, some sewer lining, and sewer surface grouting.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions?
Is this, is this final payment, or is it just progress?
Just progress payment.
Just progress. Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Clu. Aye. Frank?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Thank you, Megan. Moving on to petitions and communications, eight point one, public hearing to, for transfer of package off sale alcoholic beverage license application from C and K of Huron Doing Business as Holiday Liquor to Carlson's Northside Service Incorporated. Pull in.
Thank you, Mayor. We did have an inspection done, and everything was approved that way. We have received no comments. It is a transfer of a package off sale license, and our finance office recommends approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions? Roll call, vote, please.
Clu. Aye. Frank?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Moving on to eight point two, consider approval of quit claim deed requested by GHDC. And this is a lot, substitute parcel for a lot the city previously transferred to the department corporation that was later discovered to have an issue, making it unbuildable. And we have with us tonight Ted Hader, but I think this is, when they went to sell this lot, there was a gas line underneath, correct? So that lot was not buildable, so they just made a swap, lot swap. Easy for everybody else to say, but, anyway, that's, anything else, Ted, that I missed?
You got it.
I guess I would entertain a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Ted, not for me? Roll call, vote, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Clu? Aye. Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye.
I know, I know.
Moving on to eight point three, consider requests submitted by Joe and Debbie Snyder for plat approval of Snyder's Lot One and Two, starting at the southeast corner of that said property. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Cranston.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is just kind of the final step here. This just approves the plat that was submitted to the joint planning commission. We had no opposition noted, so we recommend approval. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions now on this? Roll call, vote, please.
Clu. Aye. Frank?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Thank you.
So it'll probably be late tomorrow afternoon, and you could stop in and pick, or just give us a call.
Eight point four, consider requests submitted by Mel and Marty Moding for plat approval of Moding Out Lot Four and Five, a replat of the lots, lots one through eight. Mr. Cranston.
Yes, this is, if you'll recall, this was really just the final step in the variance that was granted out there. This is the property up by their, by their shop and everything, and this just splits the two lots. We had no opposition to this again, and the joint planning commission heard it, and they had no issues with it and recommended approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Clu. Aye. Frank?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Eight point five, consider requests submitted by Dennis Bennett, address seven oh one Colorado Southwest for a home occupation permit to operate a small engine repair business in an area zone, R three, one family, two family, and townhouse residential district. Mr. Cranston.
Thank you, Mayor. The hearing examiner heard this home occupation permit request, and we had received no opposition to this. The only thing I made for comments as far as planning and zoning goes is that we recommend an approval with the condition that there be no outside storage of any vehicles or parts or equipment.
Okay.
Move to approve with that said condition.
Second.
Any questions for Dennis? I see Dennis in the crowd, so.
Is there anything we can do, like, does he have to give a speech?
Well, we could.
Demonstration?
Can you rebuild a carburetor quick for us?
Too easy stuff.
Yeah.
Let's just do a roll call, vote, please.
Aye. Frank?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Thank you, guys, for coming in. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Second reading of ordinance number twenty-two seventy-six twenty-three dash four eighteen yard setbacks. One more time, Mr. Cranston.
Thank you, Mayor. This, again, merely just cleans up some language in the zoning ordinance. It clarified some things, and it made it just easier to comprehend. The former language in there was very difficult to understand, and so we'd had several calls on this, and we felt that this was the best way to handle it, rather than get into interpretation of an ordinance. We could just clarify it and be done. So I'd recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for me on this? Roll call, vote, please.
Clu. Aye. Frank?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Moving on to departmental items. Ten point one, consider recommendation that the city continue coverage with Avera Health Plans Delta Dental and Principal V S P Vision, and Brenda Artman of First Stop Insurance Agency continue to serve as the city's agent and authorize the human resource manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city of Huron, and she beat me to it. Here she is.
Well, you, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. So the memo in your packet outlines a recommendation from our city health insurance committee comprised of members from both unions, management, and the city commission. The committee met a few times to review all of our benefits, premiums. We did have an increase in Avera Health and Delta Dental, but they did take a look and review those premiums, and they are recommending that we keep the current benefits that we are already offering, so we would still have the same four plans with Avera Health, each having four tiers to accommodate the employees' needs. And we're also asking, the committee's asking for the commission to approve the city's contribution to the health savings accounts with employees who are participating in that. So if you have any questions for me, otherwise I ask to have the committee's recommendation approved and authorize me to sign all documents.
Do you approve?
Second.
Any questions, comments? I would like to say thank you to Shawna and Shannon, you get them mixed up, but Shawna and Shannon, and the insurance committee, Mr. Bragg isn't in that, too, and Bren Artman and her staff, the gal that comes with her. Everything was very civil, professional, very easy. It was.
And thorough. This is my first, my first time being a part of it, but they really do their homework, and everybody involved. I was very impressed with the steps that they go through to ensure that we have the right offering, and all of this is as budgeted, right? So everything that's being approved is as previously was set in the budget.
Thank you.
You bet. Roll call, vote.
Clu. Aye. Frank?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Mayor Robish?
Aye. Consider the approval of the training proposal in agreement with Mitchell Technical College for the leadership training and authorize a human resource manager to sign again.
All right, thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. We have contacted this year with Mitchell Technical College for leadership academy training for our first and second line management. This would be a continuation of that program for two thousand and twenty-six. This money has been allocated for in the two thousand and twenty-six budget. We have seen some really, really good things come out of this leadership academy this year. We've seen a lot of engagement with the participants and just continued to see that teamwork. It's really, it's very impressive to see everybody working together. Next year, we'll have twelve new participants that will be participating. It would be the same format with two classes a month for two semesters, and they would get the college credit for that as well. So I would like to ask for approval to continue this program and to authorize me to sign the contract.
I'll make the motion to approve and authorize you to sign.
Second.
Anything further?
I do have a question, Shawna.